Okay.
Then you have had like that underutilized, you know, you've been operating more on the administrative side.
It's a physical facility.
Maybe they're like.
Yeah.
They're trying to destroy your.
Some of this.
Yeah. But listen, I was, I literally just started, you know, I am, it was this morning, so let me get in.
Yeah, it's been a while since.
Yes, we did. And now we hired out a consultant, but I think, you know, like, that'll be kind of like.
Draft. I'd like to start the meeting, but there's a giant swatch with the Barbie Band-Aid.
I'm just kidding. We're waiting for bracket. No, we're waiting for bracket.
Yeah, very.
Hey, I have another year or two on my term.
Yeah.
There you go.
So. Oh, you're totally on time. Don't catch your breath.
No, I'm good. Thanks, Sam.
Ready, Freddie? All right. I will call the December tenth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting to order. I will accept a motion to accept the agenda as presented or amended.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, motion passes. Approval of the minutes from November twelfth, twenty twenty four. Any addition, changes, corrections?
We have approval.
We have a motion by Dr. Prithrich.
Second.
Mr. Cruth with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing, hearing none, we will enter those as approved. At this time, we'll entertain comments from the public for items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you would like to come up and share three minutes of your wisdom, we would gleefully invite you to go to the podium and state your name. And for the record, there are six people sitting in the same spots they were sitting in before I started talking. So I will take that as a nudge that we don't have any public comments related to non-agenda items. Reports from commissions, boards, committees, and staff. Mr. Cruth, we'll start with you.
Nothing to report.
Perfect.
There was a meeting of the Climate Action Committee on November twenty first, and it was sort of wide-ranging and good meeting. I felt, or there was discussion about sort of the metrics for the climate goals for this year and discussion about planning for the following year. We're going to meet again in January and really start talking about twenty twenty five.
Perfect. Thank you. Vice Chair Rosenberg.
Yeah, so like thirty nine minutes ago, we got out of the meeting for the Housing Advisory Commission. So it's pretty fresh in my mind. Probably the most important thing to bring to planning is just to kind of say how the Cottage Community Project did meet its final end with City Council recently. And Assistant City Manager Jessica is hoping to get an RFP out as soon as possible to go ahead and look at developing that land in a different way. That's the land out on Hester Road.
Did you, did the committee dig into it a different way or?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, okay, perfect.
And then less, less relevant to here, but still incredibly important, is that we found that it is good perhaps for legislation to be put through to help protect those who might be facing eviction. And at the same time, we feel like we need to do more direct marketing to teach people like what they can do for themselves based on what's already in existence in the law. So some advocacy. So just wanted everyone to know, since it's fresh in my mind, that that's really important to us in the city. And so we're thinking about it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Brecken.
Yeah, Environmental Commission continues to talk about getting as much solar at all levels as possible. Ongoing. Yeah, so that's where we stand.
Dr. Berthridge.
So, and I can start and Matt can complete. So the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board didn't meet, and we talked about a variety of different things. One was that the planning for the Oxford Area Trail, the Northwestern Arc, is going to be coming before Council in the Council's next meeting. And, and some of what we're talking about with the trail involves kind of new arrangement of the trail that hypothetically could be in, in the public right of way, replacing sidewalks and trying to discuss some of the, clarifying what some of the city's responsibility would be vis-à-vis property owners for that kind of thing, because it's kind of new and precedent-setting. The other thing was, we have some, as part of the repaving program, we have a complete streets policy that, that kind of tries to assure that there's safe and equitable access for all modes of transportation. And the repaving is potentially going to be looking at some neighborhood streets for which maybe they're missing sidewalk segments. And so thinking about how we can try to figure out how over time ensure that streets, all our streets provide equitable access for people, even maybe it wasn't put there in the late sixties or whatever.
So you mentioned residential streets. I think of Lynn Street, and you and I love the term Swiss cheese. It seems every other parcel has sidewalk. You've said residential. Would that also include residential adjacent?
Well, the way this, the way the city currently does it, and for right or wrong, is that when, when, it's driven by the paving schedule. So when, when the paving, the condition of the asphalt deteriorates, that's when the city looks at a street. And at that point, try to replace the curb and gutter, or, or there, if there would be missing sidewalk segments, that's traditionally the time the city's not, you know, I think in other circumstances, you know, we might, for example, look at, at missing pieces, but Lynn is a good case where, you know, like, should it remain like Swiss cheese in perpetuity until the plat, the paving needs to be replaced in ten years, or is there some alternative way? But yeah, currently, that's not on the paving schedule, so it's not on the list.
Okay.
But I think it's, you know, the goal would be to complete those kind of missing segments.
Perfect. Thank you. If you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, so to add what David said about both. On one hand, for the Oxford Trail, for the Northwest leg, we talked a lot about the issues that came up in the, in the hearing in October, and how to package that material for Council so they can make an informed decision. And so one of the things that came out of that was we, we passed a resolution recommending that Council release residents that are affected by the new trail from like maintenance, like snow plowing, snow shoveling, and that sort of thing. So we talked through a lot of details in that respect. And for the, for the, the, the paving, another thing we talked about was creating a line item in the capital budget to provide for some of those sidewalk in capital, complete street improvements.
Perfect. I know this is more Council, but Dr. Berthridge, as I've been, I saw on an agenda to report something related to campus development.
Yeah, so some of you, if you've been reading the newspapers, know that there's discussion on campuses about some, some facilities that potentially could have off-campus impacts. I mean, the relationship between the university and the, and the city is kind of a complicated one. As a jurisdiction of the state of Ohio, they kind of do their own thing. Zoning doesn't necessarily apply in the same way. But, but there have been some discussions about some projects that could have off-campus impacts in terms of parking, or, or transportation, or public safety, and so Council adopted a resolution. Basically, you know, recommending to the university and the Board of Trustees that they engage the city of Oxford in kind of a meaningful way in terms of decision-making, not just kind of informing the city about this is what we're going to do, but like to have that conversation. And, and the second part of that is that, you know, that while the university enjoys a certain amount of like freedom from local regulations, they are supposed to, Mr. Connor can, can correct me if I'm wrong, make a good faith effort to comply with local zoning and land use regulations. So if a development were to, you know, impact a historic property or something, the university in theory should make a good faith effort to comply with our HAPC regulation. So it was just kind of like a gentle, you know, the best projects in Oxford are collaborative ones between the city of Oxford, in the same way that with the car plan, we did stakeholder interviews with the administration to understand their concerns. We hope that it, it just remains a two-way street as it has been.
And pardon my naivety, is there somebody from the university who pays attention to what the city does? So for example, I heard rumors of a hotel, which, being a Planning Commission member, I chuckled, because there's two of them under construction right now, so right-hand and left-hand normally like to know they're attached to the same body.
I think in the, in the past, it was interesting. Once upon a time, Steve Snyder was the assistant to the president, and he used to attend council meetings, and I think he was a very direct conduit. I don't, I think they pay attention. I think that the staff meets on a regular basis, and Mr. Perry can talk about it. At the staff level, there's communication about those things. You know, one, one of the benefits of the city of Oxford is that we're a public entity. So if there's a proposed hotel development, the university knows and can, and can speak about it just like anybody else could in the public.
Well, there's one that they should know about, because there's trees that were taken down to show them.
Yeah, so I, I do think that, like, we, we try, and because of our nature, we're democratic, and I think that, and Mr. Perry can talk about those relationships, but, you know, the hope is, is that the best development comes from collaboration between the two.
Perfect. And thank you for, I put you on the spot, so I appreciate being good support about that. HAPC was canceled, so my favorite report to give, none. Mr. Moore and Mr. Perry, anything to?
Zach and I both attended the Miami Valley Planning and Zoning Workshop, which is a great conference. It's starting to get to the point where it's almost sizable enough as the, as the state planning conference. Housing continues to be a major focus, and there were, there were a few sessions on that, many other items as well. That was really well. Mr. Conard was there as well. And it's good to hear that a lot of people in the region are working on the various housing challenges. And I was at a separate conference, actually the day prior, and really just getting training on kind of a systemic approach to it, not just from the zoning aspect, but the financing, the infrastructure. It's definitely a nationwide challenge. To your question about collaboration with Miami University and communication, there are two standing meetings that happen between, there's a, there's a broad community meeting of leadership in the community that has city staff and university leaders on it as well. And then there is a monthly meeting also between the Service Department, my department, and the physical facilities, just to discuss what projects have mutual interest. So there are those. It doesn't always trickle its way up to the leadership of the two organizations, but it is, as working groups, those do happen. That's all I've got to report. Thank you.
For the working group, is there an opportunity, whether ad hoc or regular, to include? So PFD is great to have there, but PFD is implementation, not planning.
Right.
So architecture, or somebody maybe more at the, the front end of it?
There is an architecture person that, that attends.
Okay.
And that participates on that. So there is a planning element to it, depending on what time of year it is.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Good question.
All right. I believe we have covered everything, so if there are no objections. So this one is more of an explanation. The, the first agenda item is PC twenty twenty four seventeen for six oh one, six oh three, and six oh seven Chestnut. That was voluntarily postponed by the applicant. Should we technically, I mean, do we table it?
You should, because it was advertised, and so.
Okay.
I know, there, I think there are some people in the audience that may want to hear an explanation. So, which staff can provide if you would like to have Mr. Moore explain?
Explain, so we, we are welcome to explain the postponement, but no contents of it if it is an item that will be tabled.
Is that okay, Mr. Conard, to just explain the reason for the postponement?
Okay.
On our record, I think that's good enough in the minutes.
And then you would then discuss one yourselves, whether you want to table it or not, which that's been the request, so. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. Do I technically need to adjourn to public hearing?
No.
All right, okay.
Yeah, so just to kind of highlight, so there is a memo in your packet that describes the current status of, it's actually a series of cases. So there's three different case numbers. There's case number PC twenty twenty four dash seventeen. That's for the preliminary and final planned development. And then there's PC twenty twenty four dash eighteen. That's for the subdivision, preliminary subdivision. So those are the only two cases that planning actually makes a recommendation to Council on. The third would be a final subdivision. That is PC twenty twenty four dash sixteen, and that only requires a Council decision. So in our review of the submitted plans from Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati, where those stand right now, there are some engineering-related concerns that need to be addressed, particular to the street profile and on-street parking orientation. And those are details that are subject to the city engineer's discretion, that aren't within the purview of the Planning Commission. So we're just waiting on those revisions to be received from the project engineer, which is Bayer Becker, represented by Mr. John Bayer, who's in the audience tonight. So with that, we think the, the earliest that this could be heard by the Planning Commission with a full staff report and recommendation would be at the January fourteenth meeting. So to, just to explain a little bit further, so staff essentially made the recommendation to Habitat to voluntarily postpone to that meeting, and Habitat has agreed to that recommendation. So at this time, we're just recommending to Planning Commission that you continue the hearing to January.
All right. I will, unless our esteemed Law Director has any objections. I had, for the record, mentioned PC twenty twenty four seventeen. I will include eighteen in that and entertain a motion to table both of them simultaneously.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. We can voice vote this, because we're not voting on affirming or denying, so. All those in favor of tabling both?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, they are tabled. So the next agenda item is PC twenty twenty four twenty, zoning text amendment to increase allowable floor space for retail services from ten thousand to twenty thousand. I will accept a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
So moved.
Dr. Berthridge with the motion.
Second.
Vice Chair Rosenberg with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none. Mr. Perry, it's all yours.
Good evening, members. Thank you. I, I want to thank Seth Kropfenbaker, Economic Development Specialist, for submitting this application. It's something that he and I had talked about, and I appreciate his creativity and innovation. Thank, trying to respond to maybe what the market may be interested in. And what this text amendment is about is to consider increasing a threshold from ten thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet. And this was a, a staff-initiated text amendment application. This process allows for, even though we are working on rewriting the entire zoning code as an overall project that we have already started, there are things that come up from time to time. And as you know, those of you who've been on the commission for a long time, that we, we do text amendments on a regular basis, especially if they respond to things that are needs, potential needs in the community, or goals of Council or Planning Commission, and this is one that, that staff had considered. Because in the Uptown zoning district, there is a threshold of ten thousand square feet for any permitted retail use on any given floor. So you can find that in the, in the Uptown zoning code, which is attached in the packet there. And there are, there are some properties in the Uptown District that have been underutilized. Many of us know them well. We see buildings that are vacant or underutilized, or properties that are somewhat vacant that, and I think the, what Mr. Kropfenbaker and I had talked about was, is the threshold potentially something of ten thousand square feet? Because these, like home quarter blocks, around twenty thousand square feet. And there are some properties, some parcels, that where there are owners that own multiple parcels that are adjacent to each other, that do take up, in some cases, a quarter of a block. And so by potentially revising or amending, whatever phrase you want to use, we call it a text amendment, that threshold to make it a permitted instead of a conditional use process, that could potentially incentivize or increase the likelihood that a builder, developer, even a potential tenant who may be interested in a development that could be happening, to maybe secure a lease on a prospective building as a way to incentivize the development. Because what, what those of you that have been in Oxford for a while have seen buildings that have been built primarily for the apartments that are on the upper levels. And the lower levels tend to sit vacant a little bit longer. Sometimes there is no plan for how those ground floor spaces would be used. And so there are a couple of properties, and I'll have them on the screen here, that could potentially benefit from a revision like this. But it wouldn't be just these properties. It could be any property. So the risk to this, by removing that conditional use process, would be that it would, we would need to rely on the codes in the administrative review process, or any potential nuisances that might occur for the, a large-scale retail use. The, the benefit could be, there could be retail uses that are larger than ten thousand square feet that would not otherwise be willing to come to Oxford or invest in Oxford if they have to go through an additional process. And so I think the question for, for the city in general, not necessarily for the Planning Commission, but for all of us, is are the existing regulations, laws, enforcement mechanisms that may be on the books for any, any type of use, whether it's through police, criminal enforcement, or it's fire code, zoning, parking, are those enough to respond to any potential nuisance types of things that might result in a large-scale retail use where there's very limited off-street parking, as we all know, or even on-street parking for that matter? The property that inspired this text amendment is the old bookstore site, the one ten East High Street site, which has been in front of the Historic Commission in the past year for a pre-application review. Some feedback was provided. There was discussion about a potential single tenant that could occupy, potentially occupy that space. That would be over the ten thousand square foot threshold. So we did look a little bit around Uptown as well, and there's another property. Those of you that have been in discussion with either City Council or the Historic and Architectural Preservation Commission, the old Funeral Home Site, one oh one West Church Street, that's actually a little bit larger than the old bookstore site, and that one is twenty-six thousand square feet. So the twenty thousand came from a desire to keep it under the quarter block. There could be situations where property owners may own parcels on the other side of alleys. And while it still would require the city to be involved to vacate alleys, that's not the desire of city staff at this point. And so by keeping it a little bit more manageable under that, well under the twenty-six thousand, then there would be no intention to expand beyond that. And so one of the comments we got from John Dethridge, Fire Chief, was that although there may be a desire now for more of a department store or a convenience type of use, could it be a bar? Could it be something else which does generate a lot more impact on parking, pedestrian traffic, other types of activities, trash, noise, those kinds of things? And so I think that raises the question of, are there existing staffing to handle those potential nuisance things that might occur as a result of more higher-intensity uses? And that's something that we have not yet fully evaluated. But I also don't know if the conditional use process would accomplish those same purposes either. And so I think it's a balancing of the risk and the benefit of potentially having nothing on a ground floor for a certain time period, or hoping that if there is something larger, that whoever that tenant might be, that they would be willing to go through the conditional use process to determine if there are any potential nuisances that occur from the result of a business over ten thousand square feet, that that can be properly mitigated. And so that's really where we're at with this, and so that's why our recommendation is tabling at this point, because we really haven't given it enough time to consider police and fire and the outcomes that might result from potentially an uptick of interest, which from an economic development standpoint is a good thing, to have the tenant for a new development considered during the construction and design phase instead of after the fact. So that's really all we have to share at this point, and I can turn it over to Seth if he wants to have anything else to offer, or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a couple of questions for you, but of course, if anyone.
I do too, but you go first.
Ah, you go first. Ah, you go first.
Well, just for clarification, the twenty thousand is for the individual, the current ten thousand limit is for the individual retail use. So a twenty thousand, you could have a building with a twenty thousand gross square foot footprint, and it could be occupied by two ten thousands or a ten and two fives.
Correct.
So nothing's currently, okay, so it's not about the building, it's about the use?
Correct.
The single permitted footprint.
Yeah, of that, of the use.
The tenant space, the single tenant space.
Of the tenant space, okay, so nothing's currently prohibiting somebody from doing a development at twenty thousand square feet that occupies the quarter block, it's just that the tenants would have to be divided between two thousand-foot spaces.
Correct, absolutely correct.
That's just an important clarification, I think, okay, thank you.
So with tractor supply, we saw that mostly because they wanted to go above, I don't recall it off the top of my head, what is the square footage allowed? All I remember is what they have, not what's.
Think of the fifteen thousand in that case.
Because we're ten and fifteen, so.
And completely different zoning and use contexts, right.
My biggest question, and knowing that outside of some gigantic surprise, we'll probably table this, is there a mechanism or is there a way in current rules, procedures, things? I'm just thinking of Chief Dethridge's point. Again, we zone things general business, and you know, it could be anything from, you know, Christmas tree store to, you know, an antique store to, I'm not going to put anything in here for ten years. Is there a way, I'm just thinking of conditional uses, you know, we all know hotels, gas stations, churches, schools, those kind of things. Would there be a way to put a safety mechanism in here that says, you know, up to X amount of square footage is permitted for XYZ uses, but if you're going to have a bar or a restaurant or, you know, like, certain, certain uses, that it would still have at least like some level of conditional review or, you know, at least like kind of thinking of the minor amendment processes? A couple eyes will look at it before.
There's absolutely, that's absolutely possible. And Zach and I have been looking at different ways to start to weave those kinds of things into the new code.
Perfect.
Where there's like a technical review committee that's maybe not done by appointed elected officials, but it's still above and beyond what permitted uses go through. So there's a deeper look at what the impacts could be.
Okay. But that would be contingent on the larger project?
Yes, yes it would. It's not impossible, and it may be something that would need to be part of the overall zoning code rewrite. We could look at it for this as well. But it's definitely possible to do.
Okay, because I think he brings up a really good point is, you know, when we look at square footage, I'm trying to remember, I think Walgreens is thirty thousand square feet, twenty, fifteen, that's fifteen, I think.
I don't remember the number.
It's about fifteen. So I mean, you know, I think of like, you know, we would never want to get in the way of a store where, or a use where it was some need of square footage, but just thinking, a bar and Walgreens have different fire capacities and things of that nature. So I just want to make sure, I don't have a problem lifting it, but also, and again, this is not something I expect an answer on now, if you have it, that'd be awesome. How many times, I can only think of a handful of times, we've had somebody request ten thou, more than ten thousand, but to your point, and I would imagine, Mr. Kropenbaker's, we probably never hear of the people who are like, eh, I don't want to deal with an extra two months or whatever. So I would love to know that, and if we have a good enough relationship with some of the people who have, eh, you know, I really think the customer experience from a developer or of a retailer who would like to, you know, if we can make sure we have that holistic approach, I think we can make a really educated decision. And I know you guys are working on that.
It's also kind of a balance too for us, because when those thresholds get raised, then depending on who the builder and developer is, it's more of a national advertising to national chains. And so there's impact on local mom and pops, and so, but then again, should the city be deciding about who occupies spaces? No, so it's kind of a, you know, it's, there's a lot of characteristics at play. And so I think with the chief's comment, I think that gives an opportunity to slow down a little bit and look at some more things.
Perfect. That's my pontification.
Well, we'll have more pontification when we get to discussion progress. I know, I have some too.
Mr. Kropenbaker, do you have anything that you'd like to talk about? I know, I know people will have questions.
Yeah, certainly, so, thanks. Seth Kropenbaker, Economic Development Specialist, City of Oxford. Echoing a few things that Sam shared, try to be as collaborative as we, you know, could and in many cases, get to with the Community Development Department. Try to solicit some feedback from the business community as well. I think there certainly are some issues that got brought to light that are important to think about. For me, and the kind of impetus for this, as Sam mentioned, is that property at one-ten, the old Phallett's Bookstore, opening up the possibility of a single large retailer? And that type of development falls into alignment with what we're going, moving towards with the modernization of our zoning. Many of the things that are brought forward in the comprehensive plan, kind of the urbanization and strengthening an urban core. So really kind of, that's the inspiration and trying to fall in line with that. Can certainly understand, you know, I think the lifeblood of our economy really are our local mom and pop, our local entrepreneurs, those new startup folks who are putting blood, sweat, tears, money into their businesses. Certainly, the, this move would largely invite a national brand, national flag. But that really kind of falls in my mind, and kind of trends in the market would fall in line with the concept like a cornerstone tenant. That cornerstone draws more folks in because of that brand recognition. And then they begin to explore, and then they start to see, oh, Apple Tree is a store with all these unique things that are uniquely Oxford and uniquely, you know, our community, and they wander over to Juniper and so on and so on. So it really almost falls into that, you know, tenant and development of, best place to open a gas station is across the street from another gas station. So you would start, you know, open up a large retailer in order to attract others to it. I think another thing to keep in mind, in terms of kind of mitigating the potential for like a bar or other maybe less desirable type retailers, are the other layers of protection that we've got in place. One, the tobacco retail licensing program. So there wouldn't be the availability to have like kind of that corner store, a package store as a part of this that would sell tobacco products. You couldn't transfer tobacco retail license to that, you couldn't get one. And then alcohol licenses also existing, you know, to the state board, the liquor control. A new bar, a new liquor license likely could not be created in a larger space. Could one be transferred? Could a Trex license be transferred in from outside? They could, but council would have something to say on that. So there are some other guide rails, guardrails rather, and some things in place to mitigate some of that. Getting a little too powerful there, getting some feedback. That's just a strength of my argument, I think. But yeah, I think, you know, there in large, you've got the packet in front of you, you see those items that are pulled out from the comp plan. But I do think it is something, as we move forward, it gives us that opportunity to be nimble and flexible and kind of meet the market as it emerges, so, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Kropenbaker? The only one I have is the twenty thousand, is that? How do we arrive at the twenty, like?
Yeah, so one, looking specifically at the Phallett's site, wanting to get above that threshold, and then, you know, working with Sam to kind of understand, what is the number? Where do we need to get to? And I do think that twenty thousand and that, as referenced, that quarter block standard, I think is important, and really that protection of our alleyways, I think it's something, again, as we're moving forward with zoning and modernization, alleyways will get some attention, but as we stand today, kind of preserving and protecting those is something to keep in mind.
Okay, perfect. All right, looks like you're off the hook, sir. All right, are there any folks from the public who would like to speak on this matter? All right, for the record, not a soul moved. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn from public hearing.
So moved.
Dr. Berthridge?
Second.
Mr. Kropenbaker with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing hearing none, we are back to our discussion, so, Dr. Berthridge, you want to kick us off?
Well, as the, as the guy who's been inside of the zoning code for quite a long time now, I mean, I think those numbers, I think those numbers predated me. But to the degree that there's some customary understanding of why we have the square footage as we do Uptown, I think they were, in fact, I mean, I believe there was some desire to foster a particular kind of format of town. Like, and so, for example, to the degree that I recall that the conversations tended more towards a square footage that would support the smaller format businesses, the mom and pop, which they tend to be about five thousand square feet or something like that, right? On up to ten thousand, but you know, part of me recalls just kind of a feeling of, like, I think in the past, it would have been hesitancy to invite a large format retailer. You know, I was just looking, like you say, a Walgreens is about fourteen thousand square feet. So, you know, I really totally appreciate, I mean, I think that we all agree that we would like to, we would like to have more retailers looking at Uptown and be in a position of turning some away. You know, right now, we're in the opposite position. I guess what I would just want to say is that, like, I think I would like to know what that kind of retailer that we imagine is, and so that we're planning for something for which there is a demand. And then also is, you know, is the conditional use process, I mean, if someone looks like Mr. Federbusch is going to be redeveloping that building, is the conditional use an onerous step that is really an impediment to the redevelopment process? Because I guess what the thing is, is currently, if we say something is a conditional use, I mean, all these uses that are currently listed are potentially at twenty thousand square feet. So we couldn't really say no to something because if we don't like it, we'd have to have like, if the conditional use process does kind of presume approval at thirty thousand square feet if we can mitigate the negative thing. So I guess like, is our code right now standing in the way? Maybe if we changed, it wouldn't really matter that much. I guess the one thing I worry about a little bit is just the degree to which we've ended up with kind of the cold, dark boxes that we've had on the first floors of our, you know, some of our Uptown buildings have been redeveloped with tenants right away. But often, we've had some pretty big spaces that are big build-out spaces. And I kind of, I worry whether a twenty thousand square foot raw dark box is an even bigger lift to build out to small businesses that, or any business, than to ten thousand square feet. Like, at least at ten thousand, you'd have to put a, currently, you'd have to put a wall, you know, so at least it would have a wall. Anyway, I think that, I would guess I would just say the tabling, just to think these things through, the pros and the cons. I can hear some pros, in my mind, I hear some cons too. And I appreciate that the question, I think you're right, I mean, so our code currently says, we have certain category of uses that are up to ten thousand feet, and then we have another category of uses that are up to ten thousand square feet. We could bifurcate our code and have some uses up to five and some uses up to ten, and the bars could only go up to ten, but the national retailers could go up to twenty, like. So I think we could get there, it's just a question of how, and just to do it thoughtfully and think through the consequences. So that's like a solid statement.
And I love the word bifurcate, so thank you. Any other thoughts? I think also, it's, one of my favorite words is a paradox, is, I'm not a big fan of urban sprawl, and even though we're a small town and it's its own general business, as we have things push further and further out, College Corner Bike, I think some of them, obviously, I know I don't envision a tractor supply, you know, on the Uptown Square, that makes zero sense. But I completely agree with Mr. Kropenbaker, if you have an anchor store or an anchor tenant, look at, look at modern architecture and use. The traditional malls of the sixties and seventies are now, I mean, at least the ones where I grew up, they're being torn down. Yet the irony is, you go to a place like Liberty or up in Beaver Creek, and they've pretty much built a replica of nineteen fifty's downtown Pick Your City. So I think there is some serious merit to Mr. Kropenbaker's thought. Also, if Mile Square has a lower usage, we're basically saying, hey, go out there, go down there, go there, whereas we would want those tenants to draw in. So I think, I think exactly what you said, Dr. Berthridge, is, is there a way to bifurcate? Is there a way to, you know, kind of assist the city staff and those with interest in developing, of understanding the tone, the tenor, the direction of what we're trying to accomplish? So, because again, at this point, we have a fourteen thousand square foot vacant property, not Uptown, but in a very prominent corner. So, you know, what are the tools and mechanisms we can do so? Just, and I know we've really just been feeding our food for thought for you because I'm pretty sure we're going to table this. But I appreciate kind of, Mr. Kropenbaker and I talked during the visit from the consultants, really about like, you know, increasing and intentionality in the collaboration so that we're not siloed and like, we plan, you do, just kind of having a more holistic approach, which your team has definitely done over the last couple of years. So with my thoughts concluded, anyone want to?
Because I think this is a good opportunity, if we're going to table, it sounds like it's going to be tabled for some further conversation and development. So I think that if people have thoughts, this is a good time, because I think if it were to come back to us, like, now's the time, if you have thoughts about the number, I think to just talk about them, because before the staff.
So if you ever get really bored, HAPC will have a conversation before we do stuff, so. I'll borrow my other commission hat and say like, this is a great time to let staff and other folks know any ideas and thoughts. And, you know, for those who read the minutes or are watching on TV, maybe something that one of us says will prompt a great idea from somebody in the public to share with our staff. You don't have to talk, but, Dr. Berthridge and I would love to.
Well, see, if you're not going to go for, I mean, I guess, I guess I would also think about what kind of retailer, A, we would like to have, and B, we're realistically going to have. I think the bricks and mortar retailer is a tough industry right now, and I don't want to stand in the way of it, but I also know our market is really small, maybe I'm just like small-town thinking, you know, but I guess I'm inclined, I wish we had more smaller incubator spaces rather than large spaces, you know, in terms of our ability to generate local business. So I guess it's just, I think, ultimately, this is going to shape redevelopment and the kind of first-floor footprint that is there. Because I think we'll see the redevelopment of those buildings eventually, and the second, third-floor uses will be there. And if the building can be built out to a twenty thousand-foot raw space, it could, ultimately could be, or ten. And so I think like, I mean, I'm hoping for our code, and we were talking about with Seth, like, I wish we'd made our redevelopments build out more of the stuff so they weren't cold, dark spaces that cost half a million dollars to renovate, but they could be smaller spaces that had walls and toilets and lights, and people could start small businesses. This is my experience with the Princess Theater. So anyway, so I just think that this number does have some influence on the kind of spaces we will have to encourage the kind of businesses that we want, and just be kind of as clear-eyed as possible about the kind of economic development we're likely to see and what we want to encourage, and hopefully, space for all the different things that would happen.
I will respond to your comment about, is our code standing in the way? I know from experience that there are, there are some developers and builders that they're, they have a style of pro forma that they use, and if it includes any discretionary approvals, then they're walking, they're not coming to Oxford. And I just know that from experience. Others are more willing, because maybe they kind of know the ethos of the community and what the collaborative nature might be, and so I think that's, it is true, not for everyone. Thank you.
Just to be clear, if we enact this larger number, doesn't preclude the smaller, the smaller entities from building smaller properties? So, you know, I think that you could say it's just a way to open the door to a larger group of people who might possibly be interested in developing here, so I have no problem with that.
I know that we don't. One of the jokes a lot of us on Planning have is, you know, if we get another pizza place or another certain kind of restaurant in town, and people are like, we have enough of that. Planning Commission does not approve, you know, hey, we're going to have a Marco's Pizza or whatever. But I think for context. But I, I think for context, and again, you know, there's zero preference for retailers, but, um, much like I mentioned Walgreens, if as staff, um, if you could have examples so people could conceptualize, because, you know, most of us have been in a CVS or Rite Aid, you know, so we have a general idea of the footprint, um, you know, uh, other, other retailers that occupy whatever space is available, I think, are, are more up to's, but just again, and not like any brand preference.
For a reference point.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, like a Lowe's is about a hundred and four thousand square feet.
Right.
Just in case you're curious. So.
That's a lot of walking.
A lot of doors to lock at three in the morning, too. All right, I will entertain a motion, uh, most likely to table this until, uh, the January meeting.
So moved.
Dr. Berthridge with the motion?
Second.
Ms. Bracken with the second, uh, tabling, so we will, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Perfect, we have none. All right, Unamas, uh, PC twenty twenty-four nineteen, zoning text amendment to facilitate a new site plan review process for alley lots that do not have frontage on a public street. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to public here.
So moved.
All right, any second? All right, Ms. Webster will get the second, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Super, love it. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Watt. So again, this is a proposed collection of text amendments to the subdivision regulations as well as the zoning code. This is to address primarily alley development as well as minor subdivisions. And the applicant for this request is ourselves, uh, the City of Oxford, care of Director Perry. Initiation date, November seventh, twenty twenty-four. So this package of amendments would affect the following sections, so eleven oh one point six and point seven in the subdivision regulations, particularly in minor subdivisions. And this is kind of being spurred by the alley development topic. But this will be much more wide ranging than just minor subdivisions affecting alley sites, it's going to apply citywide. And then particular to the alley development subjects, so the zoning code sections that would be affected, eleven twenty-nine point twelve, that's an administration section, eleven forty-one point zero three is the supplemental section. And within that, there is a brand new subsection that is being proposed, and that's kind of the, the meat of what we are hoping to adopt, uh, particular to alley development. That would be a brand new subsection J at the very end of that section. Chapter eleven forty-three districts, this is pretty straightforward, it's just providing a series of cross references back to the new section in eleven forty-one, particular to alley development. So every residential district would have in it a cross reference saying, please make sure that you pay attention to the new alley development provisions. So nothing too dramatic happening there. And then eleven forty-nine oh three is the residential parking standards. So this is a set of changes that are intended to coincide or complement the new alley development provisions. So that's a summary in a nutshell of what we're proposing, particular to alley development. And so with this package of text amendments, uh, this is pertaining to what we would sometimes call the Oxford Alley Houses, and certainly we have a handful of those already in existence here in town, so here are three examples. And of course, what has spurred these, um, these amendments is a variety of different factors and, uh, a lot of historical context, too. So the City of Oxford was originally platted in eighteen-ten, and then zoning really didn't become a thing until the standard zoning enabling acts were passed in the latter half of the nineteen twenties. By the nineteen fifties, you had widespread zoning adoption. And then particular to Oxford, we had the charter amendment in nineteen seventy-six that restricted, uh, residential dwellings within the Mile Square to no more than three units per structure. And then following in twenty seventeen with the package of amendments that was addressing accessory dwelling units, for whatever reason or another, the alley development, um, restriction was lifted at that time that allowed for principal entrances to be oriented onto either alley. So that kind of opened the floodgates more so for these particular developments to occur. And so on to the recent developments, so, um, this topic has come to the Planning Commission several times before the initiation of these amendments or even the adoption of a moratorium recently back in April. So there were concerns regarding alley lot setbacks that were brought to the Planning Commission back in twenty twenty-one in January via, via slideshow that presented, that was presented at the end of the meeting. Then we had a work session in twenty twenty-two where alley development and revisions to minor subdivisions were identified as a critical priority. So there was definitely, um, some precedent and some conversations that motivated or spurred the, um, the action of actually bringing forward amendments even before we had the moratorium, which council adopted April second of this year to instate a temporary pause, that's essentially what a moratorium, what a moratorium is, to temporary pause on the issuance of building permits for alley houses as well as the approval of any minor subdivisions that would be particular to alley sites. And, um, then later, uh, April ninth, we had a, a request for two nineteen West Walnut Street that was a lot consolidation, so this was an alley site, um, that was voted five to one despite some opposition at the time expressed by the director and the chair, though the outstanding moratorium prohibits construction for that particular site. So these are just some very recent developments within the past few years that are leading up to this point, where we're now considering, um, a package of amendments that would address alley development. So I've broken up this presentation into two major parts. Part one, mainly for the benefit, benefit of the audience in attendance tonight, this is a recap of the September tenth work session that we held with Planning Commission. And then the part two will be actually getting into an explanation of what the amendments would be designed to achieve. So beginning with this slide here, this shows the original platted lots for the City of Oxford. So uptown is here in the center, so here is Main and High. So the original plat for Oxford consisted of these sixteen blocks here. And the standard lots were sixty-six feet wide, or, yeah, sixty-six feet wide by a hundred and sixty-five feet in depth. And there were only eight lots per block, believe it or not. So you had the original core platted in eighteen-ten, and then following in eighteen-twenty-seven, you had kind of the C shape that came about in the outer blocks. And then later on, eighteen-thirty-one, the blocks bounded by Talawanda Road, Campus and High and Vine came into existence. So when you look at the original lot lines and you do a historical comparison to the current property lines, you can see that what has resulted over time differs quite substantially from that original vision. And when you look at, um, and this is just one example block, but there's countless blocks just like this with historic building stock, what you realize is there's, of course, quite a few houses that predate the institution of zoning. And the way that property was kind of bought, sold, transferred, um, in the past, when it came to these original lot lines, essentially folks were just carving up the land that they needed to, um, get the site to orient the way that was desirable for them. So even though the original vision had the narrower width along the north-south streets, what you ended up having in a lot of these blocks is you had structures that were oriented toward the east-west streets as well, and the way that that was achieved was by slicing and dicing these kind of horizontal lots, um, to achieve the orientation that was, that was desired. And what this ended up creating were, uh, I guess, at least the illusion that there would be these, um, additional or, or separate buildable sites that would be to the rear of those historic homes. Um, and then another thing to keep in mind, too, is back in eighteen-ten, there were no automobiles, um, it was a horse and buggy city. So, uh, of course, the original vision was kind of dictated by the forms of transportation that were present at the time. And, uh, we are kind of working within or around that context when it comes to accommodating the modern day technologies and modes of transportation. So with the conceptual Oxford block that we have shown here, this is pretty much the status quo when it comes to alley development. We are applying the setback standards that are meant for standard lots on alley parcels, essentially pretending that they are standard sites. And oftentimes, the outcome are some rather unusually shaped buildable envelopes or buildable areas that could result in some very funky looking structures. And so really, the subject of alley development deserves its own special treatment within the zoning code. And, um, it's important to note that setbacks absolutely influence the character. So what you have here, of course, you have an example of an alley house in Oxford. And to the right of this, this is an example in German Village, neighborhood in Columbus, just south of downtown. And you can see that the reduction of a setback substantially influences and changes the character that one could witness along any particular, um, alley or what we might call B Street as compared to the, the A Streets, which are the primary streets, the named streets. And, uh, just a summary, I know there was a lot of slides that were thrown your way during that, um, work session, but in summary, Oxford is actually not all that urban when you place us on a spectrum, uh, comparing us to fellow college towns in Ohio like Bowling Green, Athens, um, Oberlin would be less dense, but otherwise, we're pretty low on that spectrum. And of course, I don't think the desire is to become a Brooklyn, um, but yeah, it's just interesting to see where Oxford falls on that spectrum. And alley elements definitely vary, no alley seems to be created equal. You have, you know, curbing or lack thereof, uh, different styles of curbing, possibly sidewalks or possibly no sidewalks at all. Elements like landscaping, the presence of trash receptacles where they're situated, um, any lighting or lack thereof, vehicle deterrence, deterrence like boulders. You have, of course, parking pads, parking spots along the alleys, utility poles, underground utilities that sometimes have to be routed through the right of way. And so really what we believe is that there's no one size fits all solution when it comes to any particular alley. We really need to have a case by case review of development along these particular corridors. They're not, oftentimes they're not improved to the degree that public streets already are, and so there needs to be the case by case considerations built into the review. And then lastly, one, um, particular important element, um, to any alley, of course, the alleys in Oxford are not named. And so when you're assigning addresses, um, the ability for access, identification, wayfinding, that becomes important as well, and this is actually an example of a neo-traditional community in Carmel, Indiana, this is the village of West Clay, and the way that they identify these Retsbury Street addresses that are contained to the center of the block is through wayfinding signage that's posted at the entrance, the alley entrance off of the main street. So with that, I'm going to begin part two, which is the summary of the amendments that staff is proposing to address these known alley issues. And I'm going to begin with minor subdivisions. So again, these are amendments that we're proposing for the subdivision regulations portion of our planning and zoning code. And really what these amendments are doing is moving our text closer in alignment with the enabling statutes in the Ohio Revised Code, this is O R C seven eleven, that defines what a subdivision is, um, defines what a plat is, things of that nature. And really the way this stacks up is there's three main categories. You have splits that are not subdivisions that are exempt from planning approval. So that would be any split, any split that's greater than five acres in size, or where there's a transfer of land between adjoining owners that is not a buildable site. And in those cases, it does not require a plat, um, it does not require any prior planning approval. The way that our current code reads, it actually has these exemptions stated as criteria. So what these amendments would do is separate that out from the review criteria for letter B and just state it as its own letter A. So with letter B, a minor subdivision, this would be any split that is less than five acres in size, which is, of course, the most common kind of split you'll probably find in a city environment. And then what the O R C expressly says is that you can have up to five splits of any original tract. And this does not require a plat as well, in fact, the section of the O R C that talks about minor subdivisions is titled Approval Without Plat. That would be a minor subdivision. A major subdivision would be one that's essentially does not fall into either A or B. Or anything that would involve the creation of new public or private streets, like dedicating new right of way, new access easements and such, that could kick it into a major subdivision process which requires the, you know, the full blown review, concept, preliminary, final, and requires a plat instrument be recorded with the county. So our minor subdivision approval procedure, the status quo for that is that the zoning administrator, and per that definition, that can be either Mr. Perry or myself acting in that capacity, that we, in addition to the Planning Commission Chair, we must mutually agree that the proposed subdivision meets the criteria in order for an administrative approval to be issued. If one or both of those individuals do not agree on the approval, then the request is effectively kicked to the Planning Commission, and then there is a vote by all seven members at a regularly scheduled meeting. And as I said previously, the five acre and the transfer exemptions, they're lumped into this minor subdivision category. And therefore, so they're still subject to this process, even though there's an O R C exemption explicitly provided in state law. So what we're proposing to change this to is essentially just have it be the zoning administrator applying the criteria, and all criteria would need to be met in order for an approval to be granted. And the administrator would be deciding whether to grant or deny based on these criteria. And if there was, um, if, if the applicant was unsatisfied with the decision rendered, then it would just be subject to an administrative appeal process. So it would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals as opposed to getting kicked to the Planning Commission. So looking at the review criteria, so currently there are seven of those. And what we propose is to more or less eliminate three through seven, so physical characteristics of the property that are suitable for building sites, no division or allocation of land for parks or, or open spaces. And then five and six, those are the exemptions that need to get taken out. And then we also had an additional criterion, no more than two new lots shall be created. Again, the O R C permits for up to five splits. So those would be going away, and these two criteria would more or less stay, they're going to be rewritten and tweaked. So what we would propose is for criterion A, located along an existing public street involving no opening, widening, or extension of any street or road. And for applying this provision, we wouldn't consider any street determined to be an alley to be a street under that language. And it's important to note that the, the criteria language that is expressed here is being inspired by or pulled directly from that enabling language in O R C, in O R C seven eleven. B is the no more than five lots that comes from the O R C. And believe it or not, we already have a definition for original tract. And there was a prior Attorney General opinion that essentially said that this definition, it resets every year based on ownership. So it doesn't really mean much, it's just like, don't go above five, if you go above five, then it's a major subdivision. Kind of overly complicates things the way it's presently written. Going to letter C, so this is ensuring that the lot meets the zoning standards. So the way that the criterion is currently worded, it says meets the dimensional requirement of the zoning district. What we're proposing to say is to be very explicit and say, meets the minimum lot area width and frontage requirements that are applicable per the underlying zoning. If underlying zoning does not specify these provisions, then you apply three thousand square feet in size and thirty feet, feet of lot width. And then D and E, also inspired by the O R C, um, has to be shown it can be. Then D and E, also inspired by the ORC, has to be shown it can be adequately served by public utilities, and has to show that provisions for access can be accommodated through street frontage or some other means. So that's the section on minor subdivisions. And what that would amount to, specific to the alley sites, is that we would not be allowing for any additional new buildable sites exclusively on alleys to be established. But we would respect those properties that were pre-existing, that were at least 3,000 square feet and 33 feet in lot width, that existed on alleys as buildable sites. But we just wouldn't be allowing for the creation of more buildable sites. So on to Part Two. This is the site plan review procedure that we are proposing for alley development. And presently, under our zoning code, we have no site plan review process whatsoever. This can be common in other zoning jurisdictions where even if you are permitted use, if you're developing a site in any way, it still comes forward for a site plan review. You're not reviewing the use aspect at that point. The use is guaranteed. It's more about reviewing the manner in which the use is actually being developed. So for the applicability of this process, this would be particular to development occurring on any lot or parcel that is situated exclusively on one or more public alleys. Any property that is zoned UP, Uptown District, is going to be exempt from all of this. So there would not be a site plan review for an alley development within Uptown. It just needs to meet the UP, Uptown District standards. Most of Uptown is covered by the Uptown Historic Overlay and would have HAPC review anyways, so there would be a mechanism to probably have some discretion over a lot of the site development aspects just pertinent to that particular review, the historic review. There would be a, yeah, so the lot requirement, I think I already mentioned this, the lot must have pre-existed adoption of these regulations, and must have been at least 3,000 square feet in size, at least 33 feet in width. In those cases, single-family dwelling would be the highest, most intense use permitted in all qualifying situations. I don't think there's too much of a surprise there. And in terms of the procedure, it would be a much more expedited procedure than what we're typically accustomed to for discretionary reviews like conditional uses, like we were just discussing, or plan developments, where it's a two-step process and a three-meeting process, where it goes Planning Commission for at least one meeting, and then two meetings with council. The buck would stop with planning on site plan review, just go straight to you guys for a decision. So you just need to have a quorum and a majority vote required to approve or deny any particular site plan. We're also expressly providing some alley standards that would override any of the underlying base district standards. And a lot of these is just a relaxation of the standards that are already in our MS districts, for instance. So maximum lot coverage, we would bump that up to 80% as opposed to 45, which is common. No maximum front yard coverage. Building height is the only one that we would restrict more. We would bring that down to two stories or 26 feet. For the front yard setback, we would match the district side yard setback. Minimum side yard would match the district. And the rear yard, we would bump that considerably down from 35 feet, which is extremely excessive, down to 10 feet. And all of these, except height, would be potentially waivable or adjustable by the Planning Commission through the site plan review process. That should be something you guys, of course, are accustomed to granting waivers. So waivers would be possible through this process. Principal entrances and pedestrian connectivity. So we would provide two options to any applicant. You could orient the structure toward the nearest street by establishing a walkway across the frontage parcel and having an access easement on top of it to ensure that that accessibility is retained should the frontage parcel ever be sold to another owner in the future. Option two would be to orient toward the alley and effectively improve the alley to improve pedestrian connectivity to the street and the nearby public sidewalk. With off-street parking, we're just essentially saying that we would maintain the existing parking standard for single-family development, which would be two spaces minimum. I will note that a lot of times, these alley sites already have parking on them that is serving the building or the use that is in front, that's fronting on the street. So there may be occasions where the amount of parking actually isn't changing at all, but there's still a densification. So that's going to entice folks probably to use alternate modes of transportation, store their cars somewhere else, et cetera. And we are also specifying that spaces may be situated in the front yard, and this is different from the standard frontage lots where the code normally discourages that. And then finally, with infrastructure connections and upgrades, the city engineer would have authority to require extra measures to ensure proper function and suitability of the alley environment. So this would be particular to things like drainage, curbing, utilities, et cetera. And the city engineer would have the authority to override any aspect of the site plan approval that is particular to the alley right-of-way. So that could be for issues that are discovered later on during the building permit process where things need to be changed within the alley. It's not going to have to get kicked back to Planning Commission for those aspects to be reviewed. They can just be reviewed on the fly, determined on the fly, when it comes to the building permit stage. But we'll still consult the city engineer as a reviewer regardless before we bring a site plan to the Planning Commission. And there's a bunch of review criteria. I won't get too in-depth on these. The language is certainly in your packet of what we're proposing. But as you can see, these are the criteria. So access, parking, building placement scale, amassing, sidewalks, connectivity to public spaces if there are any nearby, utility access, drainage, landscaping, or pedestrian aesthetics would be the main criteria that you would be judging each application on. So this is a sample site. This is actually the 219 West Walnut site. So going back to the provision about the options for orientation, so in this example, there's actually, and this, again, this is why it's really important to review these on a case-by-case basis, because given this historic structure that's already here at 219, there's this significant side yard, this wide gap right here, where there's a clear visibility sightline from the street to the rear. So that presents an opportunity where if you wanted to have the front door face on the Walnut Street, have a new Walnut Street address, it would make perfect sense to do that as an option, or possible orientations toward the alley. So a lot of different possibilities that could be designed within the context of these So concluding on the residential parking standards, just one slide here. So setbacks on principal structures, presently, the minimum setback is three feet. We are proposing to clarify that the actual pavement itself can go all the way to the foundation wall. You don't have to have this awkward gap between your driveway and your structure if you don't want to. But that three-foot area would essentially be a buffer zone where if you've got parallel spaces and somebody is opening their door to either enter or exit the vehicle, there's that additional buffer space. And it would also clarify that when you have spaces perpendicular to a wall, that you can have an elevated curb installed in lieu of the setback to prevent or deter vehicles from impacting the structure. Setbacks from lot lines. So right now, we have these three-foot setbacks that are required on either end of a parking pad that is situated off an alley. Creates these kind of awkward grass strips that could be prone to mud ruts from tires and so forth. Sometimes, there's actually even gravel that's put down. It's technically not allowed, but, you know, again, if you're going to have mud ruts, how are you going to handle that? And if you can't pave it, you're left with limited options. So what this would allow for is for that three-foot setback to actually be encroached into, provided that the neighbor has no objection to it. Front yard parking, clarifying that any pre-existing parking can count toward the minimum that might be required. So if you've got an existing front yard parking driveway that can accommodate two vehicles within the front yard, then that can count as your two spaces. You don't need to extend the driveway to have a double-stacked driveway. And then driveway width, this is clarifying a max of 12 feet in the front yard for mile square and RO districts. Right now, we have a 30-degree angle standard, which is sometimes difficult to communicate and administer, so this is kind of intended as a replacement, in effect, for that. But elsewhere in town, we would maintain the existing maximum width standard of 18 feet for driveways. So I appreciate your patience. I know there was a lot of material. We have reached the end of the presentation. Again, the staff recommendation on this is for approval of this package of text amendments. So I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
All right. I have some questions, of course. But anyone else?
I do too, but anxious to hear from other folks first.
Yeah.
I think it's you two again.
Go ahead.
All right. So thank you for this and for generating this code in response so that we can move forward with, you know, tailored regulations for alleys rather than just prohibit them. So some kind of specific questions. In the minor subdivision, you have a prohibition on new alley developments, new minor subdivisions on alleys. In my reading of the Ohio Revised Code, does that not, does that, is that aligning with the Ohio Revised Code in our current definition, or is that its stricter definition of the street? Because it seems like the Ohio Revised Code, nor our code, I mean, our own code calls an alley a minor street. So is it, you know, if we're aligned with the Ohio Revised Code, is the street not the street? And so, yeah, so have we gone above and beyond the Ohio Revised Code in that limitation?
I don't think I have a comprehensive view of all case law that would be related to the phrase "public street" as is used in the ORC, but my personal read of that is I don't imagine that alleys were ever intended to be construed the same as streets. To me, you've got streets and you've got alleys, and you need to have frontage on a street in order to make it a buildable property. So what the code, in our situation, what this proposed code would do is clarify that with respect to the terminology used in the ORC of a public street, we are meaning only those streets that are considered thoroughfares and not alleys. There's not any proposal to change the definitions of alley or street within the zoning code. I think the existing definition of alley in the zoning code is more than sufficient. If we wanted to have a, you know, a separate map that would identify, like, where are the A Streets versus B Streets in town, so that we have a very clear understanding of what is a street versus an alley, so it's more clear-cut, so it's not subject to discretion on the part of the zoning administrator, then that might be, you know, a way to, a way to go about it so that there's clarity.
So I think we'll want to talk about that, just because I think there is, there's some discretion there, and we just want to decide which way we want to go. Another question was, is, we're applying the minimum parking standards to this as we would with the rest of the district, but I also suspect that that's, we're going in a direction, I was trying to look at our comprehensive plan, because I know the ethos is we're, we may be rethinking parking minimums in the future. Should we kind of perpetuate what we think is a dying approach to parking provision in this, out of consistency and uniformity, or is this now not just time to start, like, if this is, if we're, if we're, yeah, I guess if we think that parking minimums have been counterproductive for us in these environments, is this not a time to start backing away from them, even if it's just progressively?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question. And I think the way I kind of decided to write it up, at least initially, was to maintain the existing standard and not kind of crack open that subject.
Yeah.
But, yeah, if this, if you want to crack that open here with this, then that's within your.
Well, and I want to piggyback that, because one of the main things with the consultant and with the direction we're going, comprehensive plan and potential rezoning, is we don't know if alleyways are going to be pedestrian, multimodal vehicular in the future. So having parking spots there, I mean, now we get into, well, you made me put these here, so I have the right to bring my car down here. I mean, so again, it's very chicken egg for me.
And that kind of it, just to keep on with questions. I appreciate the desire to think about the pedestrian connectivity on the alleys as we do on streets, and you've talked about sidewalk provision. We also have really no tradition or custom of separate pedestrian infrastructure in our, we don't have a sidewalk alley, an alley sidewalk network. So I guess my question, and you don't need to answer it right now, but can we imagine other ways that might ensure that safe access, but through the strengthening, through the shared nature of the street? And maybe that's a, you know, we require this or that, but I guess that's just to pose the question that, you know, are there alternatives to say pedestrian access other than separate infrastructure? And maybe we can talk about that also. I don't know if you've thought about that yet, Zach, or is that somebody should talk about?
Yeah, so, yeah, you raise a valid point here, and I think I should point out that the language would not preclude other solutions other than a traditional sidewalk alongside a vehicular travelway. So you could have, for instance, a shared alley that's improved in such a way that it's clear that both modes can use the same travelway. I mean, there's, there's low traffic on alleys to begin with, and it's low speed.
Okay.
So maybe in those contexts, it makes sense to not have to separate the two, but just have one.
But we just want to assure, improvements, but they could be different ways of assuring.
So just to read the language that would be proposed for an address or entrance oriented toward an alley, it says, "The applicant shall make improvements to the alley right-of-way such that the pedestrian accessibility is created between any nearby public street or sidewalk and the new alley dwelling unit. This may include construction of an elevated curb walkway alongside the paved vehicular travel lane. The applicant shall adhere to specifications as required by the city engineer." So the use of the word "may" there is permitted, so it's not the only option.
Okay, thank you.
It just suggests that it's an option.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
So this is, this is kind of a question, but also something that I want to discuss with the group. I have expresses to Mr. Perry and Mr. Moore before, I would love to find efficiencies in streamline, but I am petrified to take out things like the chair or rep from planning being part of the equation, simply because...
You're talking about the minor subdivisions now?
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, minor subdivisions. My favorite example is a previous Oxford staff member or some rep, I don't know who, made a decision, and now we have the Gaslight Village seven feet apart, and you can walk across the street to Ace and get a 2x12 and walk the plank between buildings. So I'm a huge fan of Metro Toys Cut once. So I'm very concerned. I think there are some things that need to be procedural and should be procedural, but also, if you look at the text amendment, by abdicating to the zoning administrator, the next step isn't the zoning administrator and/or the chair saying, hey, maybe the whole group should look at this. It goes to BCA. It takes planning out. And I have a huge concern with that, not from a power struggle, but more from a, if we are the ones appointed to be the platting authority, I do feel that there should be more conversation or more flexibility there. And again, I just, you know, I'm personally in favor of tabling this, because I think we need to dive into these nuances a little bit more and make sure that we're equipping staff with the tools and resources they need, but also not, you know, unintended consequences is my favorite thing. So I want to make sure as we do these things, even like Dr. Perthridge and I were talking, so that's, if you could, are there mechanisms or other alternatives? Because I agree, there's stuff in code that, I mean, we chuckle, like, we're going to do this, and it hasn't been in code for 10 years. It's like, yeah, we need to get that stuff out, but what's, is that a codified impetus, or is that an effort to streamline?
It's an effort to streamline. So in my... So in my mind, a minor subdivision approval is actually a pretty cut and dry, straightforward thing. Because what you, as a zoning administrator, are examining for compliance for, they're very objective, like black and white, yes or no things. Does it meet the zoning minimum lot size? Does it meet the frontage? Does it meet the width? Is there access? Is there utilities? Those are very cut and dry things that in my view at least, I don't believe that it needs to, it start to involve. Not that we don't enjoy conversing with you on those things and sending you a lot of explanatory email. But a, a lot of times, as you well know, a lot of these are kind of rubber stamp type things that we just have to force you to sign something. And so the interest was to try to help to expedite something that's worthy of expediting. I mean, it's no secret that there's a lot of things that, there's, there's powers delegated to staff on, like the site plan review aspect, first of all. We don't have site plan review for permitted uses. So you're relying on staff to apply and interpret the codes, you know, ethically and to the letter of the law for a multitude of projects, and that's exactly what we do. Um, and so to me, this is no different than that. It's just, it's applying the provisions of the code as written. And frankly, if you don't apply those provisions straightforwardly, um, and there's an appeal, then to me that is, it's, it's, it's a matter that's worthy of an administrative appeal. If the lot was, you know, let's say you're in, um, R one M S and you need six thousand square feet and the lot was fifty-five hundred square feet and you approved it. Then that should probably be subject to an appeal because it doesn't meet the letter of the law.
But the planning commission also has the right to, um, apply, uh, you know, waivers and, and variances and things. I mean, we did it, um, I remember we were at L C M B and something came across to us and, and I'm making this up because I don't remember the exact details, but it needed six thousand. And everyone's like, ah, fifty-five's close enough. So I mean, that is the point of, of the board. So I, I, again, I, I know this is more of questions for you. I, I, my question, or I guess my, my request would be finding ways. Because there's always, a- and there's always an objective approach. But even things, uh, that you and I have talked about in the past that are beyond objective, somehow somebody in this town figures out a subjective, oops, I didn't know. So I'm trying to do safeguards because I think of, you referred to the twenty seventeen. There's a lot of things that came out of that where people are like, oh, yeah. Uh, and even folks on this commission have said, uh, you know, again, funny enough, joint commission meeting at L C M B. Well, but we meant this. Well, that's not what got voted on. So, um, I, I would like that part revisited.
Well, let's, let's do the questions and I would love to hear also from, you know, yeah, because I think where there's plenty.
We were trying to let everyone else talk, but apparently.
Well, yeah, I mean, let's do the questions now and then we can hear so then we can talk.
Don't worry, I can share.
Yeah, sorry.
I think this is totally obvious, but I just want to have it said for the record that this would, um, have no impact on existing, um, build out alleyway properties, right? This is only for new projects.
This is only for.
Well, if they're demolished, they would have to be.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
Look at the applicability language. I, I believe if there's, if there's something like an addition being made to an existing house, I doubt that there would be many instances where something like that would happen just because it seems like they're pretty well already maximized in terms of the houses that have been built. It's already a small footprint to begin with. But yeah, we would just look to the applicability section. And I think it probably has some pretty.
Could you just tell us what page?
Any construction addition or alteration.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, sixty-seven.
Thank you.
Our page sixty-seven, it would be in, uh, the city's as one thirty-seven.
Yeah, I would say page one twenty-five at the bottom. And that's just denoting page one twenty-five of the working copy of zoning code.
Yeah.
Yeah, the electronic version has the entirety of each chapter that's affected by the amendments. But the printed copy, just to reduce paper, is only the pages that have amended text.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore? All right. Seeing no questions, you. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this? If you'd be kind enough to state your name, and you don't have to state your address, but if you want to let people know you have an office on what, you know, Walnut.
Thank you. Scott Webb, one oh three West Walnut Street, architect here in town. First off, uh, I think first blush of this is all extremely positive. I think that, uh, the improvements to the lot coverage, the changes to the setback, the parking, all of these are things that will make better projects. And, you know, I've followed this along. I've been to a few of your work sessions. You know, we've talked about the fact that, that planning and city council are in favor of these type of projects. Let's find a way to make them better. I think that we've accomplished that goal, uh, in a lot of ways here. I'm with, uh, Mr. Watt on the sort of change of direction, um, through, uh, staff rather than, um, as he described, the way it currently is. If staff and, uh, the planning chair don't agree, it moves on to planning commission. I think changing that path to Board of Zoning Appeals as an appeal to an administrator's decision just is a, it's a dead end for an applicant. I mean, it, it, it leaves no wiggle room for planning commission, um, you know, which we may or may not have. But in addition to that, I feel like it just, it changes the actual process. I don't think Board of Zoning Appeals belongs in this decision-making realm here. Their standards are different. Their decision standards are different. And so that, along the same lines, um, I think that, uh, just sort of for a little context here tonight, we're talking about making it easy for twenty thousand square foot national retailers to come to town and not go to planning commission. We've written a nice set of rules for these tiny little alley lots and we have to go to planning commission. And it appears that the city engineer can override the entirety of what we do the way it's written right now, which is a little bit scary. These, uh, the, the vagaries of connecting to the alley that may include, uh, connections to all the way to the public right of way means either construction in the right of way, construction in alternate properties. Those of us that have worked in town a long time know that the alleys aren't always even in the alley right of ways. They're on one side or the other, maybe in the middle. It's hard to say. So burdening, you know, what, what we're talking about, limiting the size down to a two-story structure, you know, and giving us some breaks in order to accomplish that, but then potentially burdening it with off-site improvements and additional meetings seems a bit burdensome. So I might suggest, uh, similar to the way that we have talked about the, uh, the lot split question as an example is, you know, we have a very clear cut set of rules now in place, proposed, so to speak, uh, for this. How about, you know, if we meet all those sets of rules, maybe we don't have to come to planning commission? I mean, what does planning commission then do other than add an additional layer of potential cost, time in addition to the project? If we meet the setback requirements, we don't have architectural review for any other project in the Mile Square. But if I bring a project to planning commission and you don't like what it looks like, I'm going to be having an architectural review here in this meeting. So I would just say, you know, we are adding, uh, in the, in the interest of making this easier to do, we're adding forty-five days and money and a lot of insecurity from the applicant standpoint with your list of nine or eleven things that you can look at after we meet all this new set of guidelines that you're potentially voting on. So, uh, in the interest of trying to make this easier to do, maybe three steps is not the answer. Something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public who would like to, um, speak to the commission? And kudos to you. I forgot to mention it was three minutes and you were at like three minutes and ten seconds, so thank you. All right. I don't see any more movement, uh, from the crowd, so, um, I will accept a motion to adjourn from public session.
So moved.
Dr. Perthurich with the motion, Mr. Brecken with the second. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposition? All right. I'm looking this way because I always forget to look this way. That's why you sat over here for years. So I'm looking this way to let you guys start. When Vice Chair Rosenberg sat on this side, I always looked this way at the screen and forgot to call on it.
So I just, um, I just want to bring up a couple of things. So I went back to the two thousand seventeen exemption and also the, um, the comments, uh, no, the, the resolution from council in April about alleys and why they wanted to put a moratorium on. So the, the main, you know, there were like five things that were cited as concerns in the alleys. Uh, they included drainage, parking, emergency access, infrastructure improvements. And I'm just concerned that the drainage problem and the emergency access problems, which in a sense are public safety, are not exactly addressed in this. And I think part of the reason is that there's a, an overlap between what a private entity can do and what the city should be doing. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up as a concern. Like how, you know, it, you, how are we going to solve the problem of fire engines having some, you know, some issues in the alleys? I mean, it is, it's still a problem and the, and the drainage, you know, I think is just a big ball of wax. It's difficult and complicated, um, to solve because we really need a storm drainage system that's public, that things can flow into in the alleys. So just putting it out there.
And I echo, uh, if you look at the, um, comments were not received from Fire Police, Engineer, and Economic Development. So it's not that they don't have a perspective. It's just at the time of the packet, it wasn't, they weren't retarded.
Right. So I just feel like that's something that needs to be layered into this so that it's not just completely open-ended in, in regard to those issues.
Mr. Crueth, Vice Chair Rosenberg.
Eileen, you're what? Do you have things you want to lash out still and think on? So I wouldn't mind holding off for a while and coming back to it.
It's a lot to absorb.
Yes.
I could comment on the concerns of, uh, Ms. Webster, if that's okay. So the reason why there's not a lot of comments on some of the infrastructure related things is because zoning simply cannot address those aspects. It, it shouldn't. It's outside the scope. There are, uh, there are specifications and standards for utilities and infrastructure. There are not customized ones written for alleys yet. Uh, there, there are some standards written for pavement thickness and, uh, the s- the storm and, and curb and gutter standards and all those types of things. So that's where the city engineer standards would, um, have the ability to require infrastructure if necessary to accomplish the utility purposes. Uh, and so while, and I appreciate Mr. Webb's comments as far as the, uh, city engineer being kind of override a site plan review. It's only for the purposes of public utilities and, uh, connections. It's not necessarily to redesign the site, but it is to accomplish the things that you just mentioned. Uh, there have been alley developments that have occurred where, uh, stormwater was not accommodated and it had to be retrofitted afterwards. And so the idea would be, uh, along with, uh, doing a tailored review of the site is to plan for, uh, things like stormwater during the design process instead of after the fact. Uh, and so the city engineer would have the ability to, uh, have requirements, uh, for that during the plan review process.
I, I just think it is burdensome for the applicants to not to go into this not knowing the level to which they will have to comply with an engineering requirement.
So I think that's the reason why the city council put the moratorium on is to allow staff time to develop the standards for, for alley developments to be done in the right way.
But you're saying there, there will be a layer added by our engineer?
It won't be part of zoning.
Okay.
Yes.
So I, I have a question. Um, I looked through this and I tried so hard on the electronic version to do keyword search. I'm not opposed to actually. I like the idea of a different height in an alley. I think it also helps with kind of permissible use, the difference between them, which has been one of my big soapboxes. I know there had been discussion because, uh, the fire chief for years has expressed concern with access to them. I didn't see anything about sprinklers or, or, uh, any of that in, um, in here, so.
That's, that would, that's going to be a separate request to city council as well.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as a local fire code amendment.
Yeah, because I know, I know we had talked about it and I, I just didn't know which bucket that fit into. Okay, perfect. Just want to make sure that didn't get lost.
Do you want to go? So, um, I, I want to echo a couple of the statements that have been made. And, you know, I really do feel like this is a really good faith effort to try to strike a balance here. I appreciate that these are complex issues and you've written a whole new section of code, code that's already pretty complicated. And so I think like I'm with Mr. Webb, I feel like it moves in the right direction in so many regards. And, uh, I feel like some of the issues that are there are, I think, can be resolved. There's a little timing thing, which is the moratorium is supposed to expire January sixteenth or something. And so we'll have to decide like, is it a tabling or do we make recommendations that keeps on moving? Couple of different things. I think that the minor, minor subdivision stuff is pretty straightforward and I think that's really great. I think that I, I understand the instinct to want to rein in the alley development. But I think if we want to adhere to the way I read the Ohio Revised Code, which tends to lump all those things together under public ways, you know, like alleys are right in there with roadways and streets. And again, I haven't gotten to the root of what the definition of an alley is versus a street, but even our own code talks about alleys as being minor streets. So I, I think it's a little bit, I mean, I, I can see why we could make the definition to prohibit minor subdivisions on alleys and we probably could do that for a variety of reasons, but, but it's probably not from trying to adhere to the what, to the Ohio Revised Code. Like I think that, I mean, I, I think the code as we currently, if, if a person has an, a lot on a street, according to our code, they have a property right to develop it. That's my interpretation. So if we go that direction, it has to, I think it has to be intentional because we have a police power reason of why we would have defined it differently. So as far as the alley stuff, I think it's really good. I think it's really like, I think that what, what it has done is strike a really nice balance, which is it's effectively the same development type as we've been permitting on what would be like the adjacent parcel, right? Like if you're on Walnut Street, you can do this. If you do on the alley, you can do that. While also moving in the direction of the way our code's going to go. I mean, a forty-five percent lot coverage at this, this is just not realistic. We, anything we keep waving over and over and over again, we might as well start moving in the direction of what's really happening. And an eighty percent lot coverage on a lot is like, that's what alley development is. I mean, it's a hard state kind of environment and, and that's what it is. I think that, uh, I think that the building height thing is really, I think it's quite reasonable. I mean, I think that Mr. Clausen's done something that's like, because of the contour of the thing, there was a three, the, the three-story thing that was permissible under the thirty-five feet. And in that context, it's not out of proportion, but I think most parts of the Mile Square, we, I imagine, and all the conversations we've had about alley development is being more like an accessory dwelling. Like I, I mean, I think we've never said, oh, yeah, the thing can be bigger than the house in front. Like I think customarily, we want these to be equal or secondary to the primary structure. So I think twenty-five sounds like a, uh, uh, not an unreasonable, like we have lots of good justifications for that. Uh, I myself think that in general, we're moving away from minimum parking requirements. And alley development, it, for more than one reason, if we're going to start doing it, we might as well do it now. You know, because A, the alley sites are more constrained and based on the way things are going, we probably want fewer cars in. and based on the way things are going, we probably want fewer cars in traffic on the alleys rather than more. Because I also don't see us as having a separate sidewalk structure on the alleys, like I think they're, the only functional pedestrian bicycle access is going to be through shared use. And so from that point of view, uh, it's kind of like, if we're not gonna do the separate infrastructure, then we better strengthen the shared use nature, which is also on a comprehensive plan too. So I'd rather see, like, I, I like the way your, the code provides the provision, like you could connect through the house to Walnut Street, like if there's a house in the front, but on this, I mean, you still kinda lean like, for example, but I can imagine a sentence that might define what those other improvements might be, you know, and this could be kind of an in lieu of or something that it's like, you make some proportion, I mean, I'm thinking of this like an exaction, which is, um, you know, that I just think that like, uh, some proportionally fair contribution to help improve that portion of the alley network to, it's just like the utilities, like, I don't think we can get around if the, if the engineer says there's no, you know, there are overhead wires here that are gonna make this impot, like, I think it's okay to be like, if you can't serve a structure, it's, I think we have good, I think we have good legitimate authority to say no until we can serve the structure with water, sewer, stormwater, fire and EMS, like we shouldn't be permitting structures we're not prepared to serve with utilities. But that doesn't mean we, they, we don't do it, it just becomes a question of how we serve it, is it sprinkled, is we, how do we deal with the stormwater? And I think to some degree, the pedestrian access is a little bit like that, like, there's more than one way to do it. So anyway, I, I, I feel like it's a lot of code to process, I, I don't know about the, the right procedure for this. Like I get your argument that it's kind of like a site plan, cause either so particular, I mean, it had been proposed to me by a fellow city council, why don't we make these conditional uses, like, we could do these alley things as conditional uses and we would go through a good conversation. The applicant doesn't wanna do that, obviously, the applicant wants to go through with a kind of, if these were straightforward, then I think that I could see why, like, okay, there's a checklist. I, I can imagine a scenario in which if they're straightforward, they, I mean, I don't know, is there a way that we could kind of, we could have a decision criteria that kicks it up when it's complicated? You know, where a, if, where, if, if, because of the dimension of a lot, criteria A, B, C, D, E, F and G are all met, but then there's something that kind of, that, 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 it's beyond the administrat, I mean, sometimes in that way, that's one like, whether it's a definitional thing, like we've said, is this a minor subdivision or not, like, minor, uh, minor amendments that can, um, planned use developments.
Yeah.
What's a major or a minor is sometimes, sometimes it's a no-brainer. And then sometimes you're like, uh, this is kinda complicated, the chair and the administrator say, you know what, this needs to be a conversation. I'm wondering if there could not be a, a kind of a language like that, that was just that safety valve, that if something were straightforward, it was straightforward and it could really just be go through the zoning administrator, you know, cause it is a by right development. But if some combination of things, the engineering or, like, and I don't know what a criteria like that would look like.
And I actually have an example that I thought of, we once had a lot split, uh, proposal and, uh, splitting the lot would have put the parking on one and, uh, parking for the dwelling on the new lot. So, we do have things that wouldn't be covered in here, but again, that would not be a BZA, that would be...
That's more like a site planning, like, I mean, I, I think these are where something about the site design requires additional review.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I guess I would say I could feel comfortable that site review is not the default, but that, but it's an option when planning commission chair and the administrator agree that there are, are issues that, I, I don't know, what you could. So those are kinda my list of things, I mean, uh, otherwise, I feel like you're a super thorough guy and you've thought these things through, so I feel like there's a certain number of relatively discreet critique, tweaks to this that could enable us to move this forward. But that's just me.
So, the easiest solution is to table it, but our next meeting is January fourteenth, and then, when does the moratorium end?
Sixteenth.
Awesome.
I'd be curious, um, just to get, like, sort of a range of comfort level with, between, you know, conditional use, like where you have planning commission recommendation to council first and second reading, or staff approval with it never getting kicked up, you know, among the seven of you.
Do you really have to ask?
Or somewhere in between, or somewhere like, yeah.
You know where I'm at, I'm just gonna answer fifty-yard line, you know that.
Just so that Zach and I have some, yeah.
I, so for me, I, I know I try to go last, but for me, it depends, because there are things that, I, Mr. Moore is absolutely right, there are things where I may have said like, I don't even know why you called me. Or, gee, I wonder if you already knew I was gonna say yes, so, like, he's dead on, there are some super straightforward things. On, on that, I just, that's where I think Dr. Perthrich and I are, I'm, I'm afraid for it to go to BZA, so that's just quick wording for me, but honestly, I think there are certain things that staff need to take more of a lead on, so, again.
So on just the alley part of it, not minor subdivision, but just the site plan review part, how much involvement, I guess, I'm curious everyone's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still middle ground, I think.
Okay. Some, some involvement potentially if it's complex.
Yeah.
For, for, I see some head nods here.
Or at least to Dr. Perthrich had a really great, uh, way of saying it is, at a certain point, it's like, eh, no, this has to get kicked up to a, uh, you know, cause that's also to protect the staff, because if staff or, or, you know, if things get beyond, you know, left, right, up, down, and it's like, ugh, maybe it's more of a diagonal, you guys should have a tool where it can be like, no, we, we need some other people for, uh, you know, I don't wanna say reinforcement, but like, you know, are we looking at this correctly, did we miss something? So I guess that's mine. Also, also real quick, because I, I want you to get your straw pool, there are parts of the alley I would approve right now, zero concern. So I don't think a full tabling is necessarily, I, I had said that originally, but I'd be cool if we kind of pulled out certain things and only approved, I don't know if you can.
I don't think that solves the, the moratorium problem.
Uh, for the alley parts, for certain parts of the alley, because then staff would have tools, cause again, to Dr. Perthrich's point, I mean, if everyone's like, yeah, we don't need to worry about parking and all that, I, I think we could amend this. It'd be a nightmare for doing the minutes and I apologize in advance, but I think there's also that.
Yeah, we can do the straw pool, but I think also we could tailor a set of recommendations to council that, uh, flag the things that need staff, you know, that, 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 we could move this forward by highlighting the things in the direction we'd like it to go. So yeah, I'm kinda curious where people are on that.
Like a partial table, Mr. Cruz.
Yeah, I would, I would say some kind of meeting in the middle, I think makes sense in terms of, um, leaving up to staff except when we reach these kind of diagonal moments of, of where it becomes difficult and where it would make sense to have additional voices.
Yeah, I, I pretty much agree, I think that, you know, there, it looks fairly clear that there's like a checklist and that that's what staff should do, and then when you see things that are troubling or controversial, then we should get involved. Um, I am concerned about when the, the city engineer gets involved, I realize it's a co, kind of a code level. So just, maybe if we could talk about this for a minute, so let's just say, you know, you guys look at something, it's good to go of, in terms of your criteria, and then it goes to the city engineer, or then it goes to a, uh, filing for a permit and then the engineer gets involved, or what?
Yeah, I think, so with the city engineer, we would, um, we would transmit the application to him as well as other departments. The, the same way we would do like a conditional use, we would ask for comments. Um, so he would have, um, a preview of the, the development plan for whatever alley site was being considered. And we would just try to draw whatever feedback or comments we could, we could ascertain at that moment from the city engineer and have that then inform our recommendation on the site plan. So I think with the, the safety valve that we build into the code, it's designed to be there for when, um, the application would come, like just say hypothetically, the site plan was approved, when the application would come in for a building permit review, which would have, uh, more robust plans probably developed at that point, infrastructure and otherwise, then there would be an ability for the city engineer to ask for certain improvements or exactions be, be made in that instance and it, it's not gonna have to trigger the applicant going back to planning to make revisions, unless the revisions are actually contained to the private property itself that's being developed. If there's revisions within the public right-of-way or pertaining to the alleyway, then that will just be the city engineer's call, but if there would be something on the site itself, um, I think that would get kicked back. But I think, and I've been listening to, to your comments, so I'm wondering if maybe the right way to strike the balance would be to, um, do it the way we do minor amendments. So essentially, it's the zoning administrator and the chair have kind of the first stab together as a unit. So, and, and the way that those works is staff will analyze the criteria and then kind of present our case to the chair, hey, do you agree, are we spot-on with this, or do we, does it deserve more discussion, do we kick it to planning? We could utilize a, pretty much the same approach with these, I imagine, and that would kind of strike more of a balance where, potentially then there could be some of these that are just administratively approved. Zoning administrator and PC chair, they don't have to go to planning commission, but if there are more wicked elements to it, gnarly elements that need to be sorted out, then we can always kick it to planning commission.
Yep.
I know I'm not allowed to talk, but I'm gonna talk loud enough that everyone hears me.
Sounds good to me, thank you.
Uh, for clarification, were you talking, uh?
Alley development.
Alley development, right.
Yeah.
Alley development, yes.
Funny enough, I'm cool with the alley development, I, I love.
And for minor subdivisions too, just keeping the same procedure with zoning administrator and chair. In applying the criteria in the code.
So just sitting here, right, and, and you, I, I, I'm trying to make this simple in my own mind, but it seems to me that when I hear the word waiver, waiver means exception and that would be what you're concerned with, if you don't have to have waivers to build on the alley and I think the issue's further complicated because it seems to me about twenty lots that are really buildable, forty-six or forty-five there are. If, if you're going in, you, and the architect knows what, what a lot is, knows what the criteria are, and says, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta design something that fits this, and you don't need waivers and, and, and you can make it all fit. I think we all agree there's no reason or the, the staff approval would be appropriate in those circumstances.
Yeah.
When you start talking about if things get hairy, that's really, it seems to me you're talking about, well, do you need waivers to get this done? Because if you don't, then it seems pretty straightforward at a very simplistic level, isn't it?
Yeah, and I think what complicates it too is, is we're talking alleys, which, you know, alleys and then one is subdividing and, and so like, again, and, and then there's other, other things in, in here where we're adding. So yeah, that's where I think.
Well, I think Mr. Moore was talking about something that is a little bit more, that there's sometimes more than one way to develop a lot and that to some, I mean, this is why I think you introduced the idea of site plan review, that there could be a variety of reasons that aren't just purely about compliance with the code, you know, that they are like, and, and, and this is, and so I, I don't know whether we need that or not. You know, I mean, I guess, like, cause you cited an example where there might be more than one way to develop that, like, do you point to this street? And it might be context-dependent, and for that point of view, site plan review might enable a conversation that produces a better product, that's not purely just about like compliance with the code. But that could also be that the developer just, we know wants the right, I mean, I don't know why, Mr. Mr. Webb seems to, you know, he suggests that maybe interacting with the planning commission might not be bad, or they might not wanna do that. And so, I mean, I think the idea, like, sometimes I think that dialogue is a productive one, the product is better. And so, I guess I would just say that the process be a little flexible, that if the chair says, I think this should go to the planning commission, or if the applicant were to say, to indicate to the chair, we would like this to go to the planning commission for your input, like I, I, I like, I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily see a downside in that, I mean, I love to have input on stuff and, but, but, and, but I'm saying that, that, you know, if it, if it's just about exceptions, then why not just have it go to the BZA? But I think we're talking about things that might be a little more qualitative, but I'm, I don't know, I'm just, I'm, you're the one who suggested the disinterview.
I've walked into situations where staff right off the bat have said, hey, we just want you to look at this, but we're leaning this needs to go to the commission. So, again.
I, I think that's been a conversation, a style that's worked relatively well, so often it's like, why do we even need to see these? You know, but I think sometimes it's nice to have that valve to, to have the conversation. And it's not sure how that could go, we could be harder, or we could say, this is good, and, but I think it's still not, like, we're not, we're not a BZA, we're, it's still like, these things are either going to be approvable under our code or not, right? So it's like, we're not gonna be a board that's gonna be granting massive waivers, are we?
I mean, you already do with conditional uses.
Yeah, but, but this is, is, what is, yeah, I didn't, I didn't see, do we have, is there that dimensional flexibility built into this?
It uses very similar language to what's been used for conditional uses.
But the proposal said we can't waive the height.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that's rigid, everything else, if, if you find that, given the context, the setback needs to be adjusted to make it greater or lesser, then that could be adjustable through the site plan review, because the whole plan is being brought forward and you have a consideration for the entire context.
And, and, so this is, this is kind of, just for the record, I actually, vast majority of this I like. My big hesitation is, I feel like, in some respect, the decade and change I've lived in town, there's always been something where we're like, yeah, we got it, and then it's like, didn't think of that, or wow, look at that one came. So like, even with the height, I'm thinking of the topography on one of the last proposals, I remember it was like this, and it's like, okay, I know we have where we measure the height, but, you know, in, in my, uh, analysis paralysis, I'm sitting here going, great, if we cap it at twenty-six feet and they just needed twenty-eight feet, like, you know, those are the kind of things I'm thinking of, like, I don't want a handcuffed staff or BZA or us. So that's, kinda like with parking, I, I, my gut's telling me we leave parking in there, cause it's easier to take it out at a later date and say, yeah, we don't require it anymore, whereas if we were to take it out now and then, something we didn't think of and we're like, oh, we should probably require this, really hard to go to those, you know, those twelve properties that got built, don't need the parking, cause for that one year, we didn't have it in there. So that, that's my biggest concern. And also, realistically, if we don't approve this today, we could approve it the fourteenth, but it would never make the sixteenth agenda, so there could be a gap, but I.
The original moratorium was six months, wasn't it?
Yeah.
We, we have the ability to extend it.
It was already extended once.
Uh, okay, we already, then we've done two six-month extensions?
No, we did one and a three, or six and three.
Six and three?
Yeah.
And I guess, and I guess also one of those things where sometimes something's just like, there's too much here, we need a work session, we need to, but like, you know, maybe it's just my interpretation, are there enough surgical things that we could zero in on them as part of a recommendation to council so that we could keep this moving forward?
That's kinda what I was thinking.
And that's why we came up with the site plan review process, because we thought that it was collaborative enough. It was less than
Yeah.
two readings of council and collaborative enough that there could be site-specific things that council doesn't wanna spend the time with.
Yeah.
And it's a shorter timeframe, and so, you know, if we keep kind of bouncing back and forth, then that's where we end up, then I think that's what the proposal is with some tweaks, so.
So, Law Director, billable hour question. Uh, we have the appeals, I'm back to minor subdivisions. Uh, we have the appeal of any decision of the zoning administrator acting on behalf of the planning commission shall follow fifty, uh, six oh two appeals.
Six oh two?
Yeah. Do we have to have, uh, zoning administrator, uh, appeal go to BZA? Or would, uh, would the person say, hey, I disagree with staff, could I have the commission look at that?
This is the administrative chapter, talks about the appeal process.
But that's what sets the BZA there.
Yes.
Could we not send it to BZA? Could we have it, the person has the, has the right to come to us?
I think that the under the room will afford it, you could probably do that.
So if we amend that?
I think that your point is, you made a comment that Mr. Webb did, there are different criteria here in place.
Yeah, so-
If you guys are looking at site plan review, as you pointed out.
Well, and and I'm thinking of the one where literally, when we looked at the satellite and they wanted to split the lot, it was like, the parking was over here, the house was here, and it's like, yeah, no. So if we change that, I think that solves my concerns with minor subdivision, because it keeps it in the purview and rule set of planning. And then if we decide and they don't like it, it's BZA, which is extra bureaucracy. But also, I think it keeps the rules more contiguous. And also allows for the zoning administrator to be the first uh, kind of
Clearinghouse.
Thank you, I was like, you know, I didn't wanna say judge, jury, and executioner, so the clearinghouse is a better choice. But it also allows for the ability to go, to have some interaction with planning, should the applicant or staff have any concerns. It also gives staff, and I hate to say an out, but if there is gray area or some uncharted territory, they could say, hey, we wanna kick it. Whereas right now, it says basically they approve and disapprove based on criteria.
I'm sorry, just to follow the conversation, you're talking about the minor subdivision, okay?
This is why we don't talk about tacos and french fries in the same-
Well, and my, my, my caveat on your answer is, you asked me on the spot, you're asking my impression, not my final answer.
Oh, now we're going that route.
But my, but my reaction is, I, I think that that would be okay.
Okay.
My reaction, not my final answer.
I reserve the right to amend it.
So, I mean, I think we just have a practical problem right now, which is that we have this looming deadline. And what I'm reading is that in general, we're pretty on board with this, but there's perhaps little tweaks, right?
So that's what my fingers are here, ready to write down what we-
Let me address that, okay? You know, I've said you bring more to prove more to it. The, there is no hard or fast rule on the length of time. The general understanding is it's about a year, but I'll tell you, up north and Dayton, uh, they've done, uh, I think eighteen months to two-year moratorium on, uh, transient gas lodging, uh, things. No one's challenging, nobody knows-
I think legally, we could extend the moratorium. I, I believe on council, there would be a tough conversation about extending this again.
I don't think they would, because we're close to resolving it.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be months, it would be-
I'm simply saying procedurally, it is, I think, I believe legally, is my opinion, that is my opinion, that it could be done. And it would be something two months or less.
Are you saying there, because we're so close, that there would be consideration from council to let it get done properly? Or that it's, no, we want it done this way, come hell or high?
No, I think it would be a good faith and honest thing to say, we're almost there.
Yeah.
So a very, very short moratorium, probably wouldn't be challenged by anybody.
Yeah, and-
Presumably has this done
Yeah.
for the recommendation, but it would be because of the timing of the ordinance that you would need to do.
Because it's procedural.
Exactly.
And and I think we need to speak, like, we need to have a little session and just iron out our various ideas about this prior to finalizing.
Or throw ideas to staff and then come back.
Or some, or something, yeah.
That would be, uh, in in just transparency, fidelity is, yeah, just, just share with-
Staff only.
Based upon what I'm hearing, it is that my request of you would be to do that. Use this time to tell staff in the log written what you want answers to.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
And 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 so, but it sounds like we're leaning more towards, I mean, if that's, again, the two strategies is we could make those things as part of a recommendation and vote this out, and then we don't need an extension of the moratorium. But if we're just talking about, it's gonna come back to us in November, there might be a thirty-day extension of the moratorium to get this through two readings?
At the council meeting, I certainly would make a recommendation for a very modest period of time. Because you're, you're, you're making a reasonable effort, I mean, I think that's a plus of moratorium. Make reasonable effort in the moratorium, project, just don't sit on it and do nothing, clearly, working hard on this. And I don't think it's the recommendation from you can't come forward until you meet account of the fourteenth to really discuss what it is.
But we can hope, I, I have some count, I think some counselors are just who who vote no on the moratorium, the extension the first time, and might vote yes, no again.
I think if we tell them it's a month and we're close and this, I don't think there will be any issue, that's my guess.
All right, there, I'll go with his read on the situation. Cause I've given up trying to read situations.
Pass the buck there, pass the buck there.
Yeah, so what are the, first, let's talk about the minor subdivision, it's the first on the list.
Yeah, so, uh, the first set of changes for minor subdivision are on our page fifty, thirty, it's co-listed as thirty-six. I mean, honestly, I just, uh, the appeal is is really, um, cause if you look, the, the only other one I had a question on, and again, I think you covered this in in Revised Code, was, um, removing the physical characteristics of the property are suitable for building sites.
Yeah, to me, that was a very subjective criterion, that's what I was saying.
Cause I was trying to think of, yeah, I don't think we've ever used that. You wanna bring in fifty-three dump trucks of dirt, Mary, you know, have fun. Okay.
So that was the first thing, the second one you had mentioned was the procedural stuff, did we kind of?
The, um, yeah, so it'd be six, yeah, exactly, six oh two and six oh three. Um, if we could revamp those to basically allow, um, I don't want them to be able to pick BZA or planning, cause that defeats the purpose. But if, if, because the zoning administrator is acting on behalf of the planning commission, if they have a problem with the decision of the proxy or or the representative, I think they should be able to come to us and and have, you know, I don't know, air their grievances, I guess. But then that would allow the opportunity, um, I, I think it really reinforces staff, because then if we concur and they go to BZA, it's not, oh, well, staff did this, and and, you know, to be honest, to an extent from, from a workforce perspective, it also insulates staff from accusations, because it's like, no, they sent X, Y, and Z, and then seven appointed people agreed or or didn't find, you know, quite a variance.
So you want planning commission to be the relief for, from staff, and staff deny or don't make the decision according to what?
Yeah.
And then BZA be the relief from planning?
Yeah.
Is what you're after, okay?
So really, it's just changing, changing the appeal, instead of the appeal of any just, uh, any decision by the zoning administrator, acting on behalf of the planning commission shall follow the rules, so, uh-
We can rewrite it, we know what you're after, you don't have to write it.
I was like, I had the like, last half of the sentence.
And, um, so my thing with the minor subdivision was about the prohibition on alleys as not being streets, and so-
We're not gonna solve that tonight.
Well, I-
Talking case law.
I, I was gonna say,
Well-
I would love to define stoop porch and, uh-
What, what, I guess, I mean, no, I mean, it's, it's, I understand the argument, but I feel, it is a discretionary, I feel like it's a discretionary argument. And we can make it, but, so to me, the question is, is it an argument we want to make?
Tell me what the argument is.
Well, Mr. Moore has basically carved out to say that, that alley lot developments will be prohi, will develop, these minor subdivisions will be prohibited on alleys. Which is basically distinguishing the alley from the street. But, you know, I look at the way our alley is defined in our own code, talks about as a minor street. If you look at the way alleys are talked about in the higher revised code, I'm not sure that's a clear-cut argument. So I guess I wanna poll, and I guess, cause I, like I say, I don't think it's a legal argument, I think it's a discretionary one. If we wanna prohibit minor subdivisions on alleys, I think it could be a legal challenge there, but like, we could try to do it. But the other part is, we could just go with the ORC, which is, we're not gonna, we're not gonna say alleys aren't streets. I mean, I, I, I believe technically alleys are a form of street, they're part of the street hierarchy. And so I would be unwilling to pick that legal battle to say, hey, you think you have a development right on a street? Cause the ORC gives you that right to do the minor subdivision on a street.
You would like to know the answer then, are alleys, are, are alleys streets?
Yeah, and if they are, I don't think we should prohibit, you know?
Are alleys or streets then?
But I, I, well, but this-
But you can't treat them differently as what you-
Yeah, can we really treat alleys different?
But this is the fifth time we've kicked the can, because we didn't wanna define the difference and et cetera, et cetera. So a couple, a couple of points is, there's restrictive and permissive law. Just because the law doesn't define it, doesn't, doesn't mean, so like, you can define what an alley is, but in the absence of ORC saying it is this, it doesn't inherently mean necessarily that it is that.
I know, I guess I'm just saying, I think we need to think about the, the law.
Well, but the other thing, but the, the law, you can, you can call an alley, you know, an avocado, and we just said that you can't build over two stories. So we have delineated regardless of name or purpose.
I know, but we're, we're talking about, we're talking about the developability of lots on public ways. And 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 that is gonna be pretty, I mean, I don't wanna spoon-feed the argument. But like, if we prohibit development on some of those alleys, one could make a taking argument.
I could make an argument that the Oath Trail is public.
So I'm saying, if we're going to do that, we have to make sure we're on really solid legal ground to prohibit the development on alleys, even though they may be streets. So I, you know, if we wanna pick that battle, that's fine, I would say, I'm not willing to pick that battle, I think they're streets. And I think we should be prepared to permit minor subdivisions upon them, and I wouldn't pick that fight, but if other people would like to pick it, that's, to them.
So, so I will pick a logic fight on that. You think they are the same, therefore we make a decision. One could argue, we don't have definitive clarity, so we should not make a decision in the absence of clarity of, you know, like, so, so we can argue it, but but I think-
Hearing that we should get clarity?
I'm hearing we should get clarity, because the other thing too is, with the city's compulsion towards multimodal, I could use the same argument that the, uh, covered bridge has the same buildability, even though it's pedestrian, because it is a functional. So, so I, I don't think we, we can kick the can on a definition, but we could say, at the same time, that in an alley, we know what an alley is, whether we think it's a street or not. I mean, I brought up the speed limit a couple times ago, there is a different speed limit for an alley than a streets, uh, than a residential street. So technically, they are different. So we could say things without defining an alley or or giving it the same-
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, we have carve-out language that has carved out an alley as not being a street for the purposes of minor subdivision, and can we really do that or not, is is a question, that's a legal question, I think we need to answer.
That answer, so, so.
That, I think, is, for me, on the minor subdivision, do we cover everything else?
I think so, does anybody have any other concerns on the minor subdivision? Clear as mud?
Okay, so how about, how about the alleys then?
Hold on a second. You know, I'll get there, give me a chance to breathe and say words. All right, so really, the changes for alley development are on page one twenty-five, uh, co-listed in our packet at page sixty.
I will start by, I think that we should move away from a minimum parking requirement on the alleys. I don't think it's context-sensitive, and I think we're moving that way with our code. So I personally would think that now's the time to, no minimum, to car minimum on the alley lots. But that's me, is there other people who feel that way?
Yeah, I think I can support that, yeah, I agree.
If you wanna put parking, have fun.
Yeah, go for it.
And, um-
Funny, well, actually, can I ask a question of staff, is there a limit on the number of spots they can put?
There is not a maximum for single-family, two-family, or three-family, I think is what our code reads.
It's weird.
There's maximums for other uses, but for those three residential uses, there's no max. So the way it would be limited would be with setbacks, lot coverage. That would be your only limitations on parking.
So here's a potential loophole, if we don't, uh, regu, uh, this is where conflicting rules can come in. We don't allow private parking lots, but if there's no maximum, I could build a shed and then put up, uh, in that eighty percent coverage, I could put up twelve parking spots and I now have a private parking lot.
Not if, yeah.
Yeah, so, well, if there's no maximum.
I don't think that's gonna be the problem here, I think people, the, the driver is going to be residential development, and so-
You cannot have a standalone accessory use on its own lot, there must be a principal use.
But what I'm saying is, if I build, if I build a tiny house, a cottage.
So a single-family dwelling?
Single-family dwelling.
Okay.
And I just, I decide to make it as tiny as possible, park it ten feet from the back and ten feet from the side. And I can cover eighty percent of the lot, I could hypothetically pave the rest. I'm also talking about enforceability, cause there's a ton of stuff that's already on the books here, that-
Yeah, that's like, commercial lot wouldn't be a-
You're, you're not listening to what I'm saying, there are people currently in this city, one of the properties mentioned tonight, who are running a private parking lot, which is smack dab not allowed.
I know.
So what's to say that person couldn't take a, a lot, build a tiny house, say it's a one-bedroom, put it there, and then our city staff are chasing around something else? And and I know it sounds crazy, but I also never thought that we'd have a two, two-by-twelves where a steel beam used to be in a building, so, uh, you know, it's Oxford, interesting things happen.
So you're asking for a maximum?
I would love a maximum, cause I, I personally could go buy an alley lot and show you exactly what I'm, I mean.
That shouldn't be hard to write in, right, and probably wouldn't cause any issues?
How do, do we need it, you know?
Well, cause it exists in other-
I, yeah, but if it's, if we're talking about commercial parking lot, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna solve the city's unwillingness to enforce on its zoning code through the writing of the zoning code.
Well, you're using the word commercial, I'm not talking about commercial, I'm talking about, hey, I think I'm gonna use the windows from this house and put them on that house. And it, there's nothing, there are so many things in this town that, uh, happen that are not allowed, that I could see somebody having an R three MS and going, yep, tiny house, it's a single-family dwelling.
I guess, I'm just, it's nine, nine-twenty, I'm just not sure it's a problem, we need to solve-
Yeah, I don't think we should be focusing on this right now.
I don't think we need to talk about it, if you guys have a recommendation of a maximum that wouldn't hurt, throw that out next time.
Right.
Right?
I, I will say, I, I wanna be respectful of people's time, but at the same time, that word perpetuity, there you go, my monthly mention of it. If if we don't get this right, there are loophole experts in this town who will make us pay, and-
We're never going to uncover every loophole at this meeting.
No, but we don't have to do the tonight.
And it's like, we gotta get the big picture.
He has a concern about one thing, and does anybody object to a maximum, is it gonna cause any problems?
A maximum?
No.
No, right?
No, I don't think so either, it's, it's kind of, it will, it will be new, because we haven't done it in residential contexts. So it's just kinda adds a new layer to it, I, I don't have any problem with it, I'm just saying that it, it starts to expand the scope of the conversation.
Can we just get back to the procedural things we talked about?
Yes.
Cause there was discussion about, um, preliminary review by the zoning administrator and potentially that being it, but that it could also get kicked up to us, I think that's an improvement. You know, so that we don't have to look at every single project.
Yeah.
I'd like to have that changed.
And I don't know what the language is, but I think we've talked about it, and I think you know where we're coming from.
Do your magic, yeah.
Throw a little bit of my pixie dust on it.
My other only little minor thing, and this can be back to the sidewalk connection, I think, like, you have a good kind of either or. You can do the sidewalk connection on the alley, or you can make an improvement, but you, there's really no clarity about what that improvement is. And so I think at least a sentence that might say, for example, the strengthening of the shared-use nature of the alley through traffic calming or something. I, I don't know what it is, just so, right now, it says, you should provide the connection, one thing being a sidewalk, but there's no alternative to what that other thing is.
Yep.
So if the only other opportunity is to strengthen, you know, the shared-use character of the alley, then I think that's worth a sentence, and that would imply something about design.
Yep, that can be accomplished.
Were there other things that we?
Yeah, so, uh, page sixty-one, number six, uh, so four A six. Uh, most everything we have allows for HAPC planning, something else to have the ability to, uh, extend something. I'm, I'm not like- I'm, I'm not like, going to fall on a sword, but think of things like the pandemic, without explicit ability to extend something, or, because the way it's written right now, is it says, once a two-year period has passed, prior approval of site plans deemed expired, and reapplications required. I'm not opposed to that, but I also could envision, I know we're trying to clean it up and get away from routine waivers, but this doesn't even allow for an extension. So, I, I'm, again-
Well, and I think an extension in this case could be simply resubmitting the exact same plan, and it would just get-
Would that require a new fee?
Yes.
Okay.
The only downside to that would be if the code is changed, then under the new code. So, an extension would allow them to be vested under the pre-existing code, a new application, they would have to come under whatever code changes might have happened since that time, so.
Okay, fair point.
Yeah.
Okay. Was the only other thing that caught my attention. All right, so, is the, the flavor I'm gathering is, you have enough context to be dangerous, you'll hone things down, we will have it, I'm assuming we'll table it until the 14th, and then revisit it, and our two resident counselors will work their magic with the other five.
Does it help to have a planning commission recommendation that the moratorium be extended, so councils acting on council? I mean, that's not the agenda item right now. Could it be, could it be part of this agenda item?
It could be part of the table.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be part of the motion to table.
Yeah, I just think it would, I think it would be helpful for council and strengthen the argument for the moratorium, whether it's, it's a, it's a planning commission consensus recommendation.
Commission, the two of you as council members, the law department, staff, maybe four.
Okay, sure. So I would just say, in, 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 so we move to the recommendation to table, what, what, you know, that-
To allow for staff to-
Well, yeah, are we at that stage where we recommend, but I think it's-
I thought we were making a motion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm going to want to move to the we-table, but also with the recommendation to council, that the moratorium be extended by a finite period.
For that period of time necessary to present the final plan following the January-
Yeah.
That sounds like a motion to me. I'm just saying.
It's a very good one, if you want to officially make it.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. But I think, I think my assumption is, we're talking, like, the necessary for January meeting plus, then council, so 30 days or something, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my motion.
I heard a motion in a second. All right, is there any discussion we missed? All right, Mr. Moore, Mr. Perry, whoever has the, the pen and the-
I'll call the rule.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Crueth?
Yeah.
Ms. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Prithrich?
Yes.
Mr. Arbuckle?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg, or Ms. Rosenberg, I'm sorry.[1749.12]